Twenty four, twenty twenty three, six P M. Please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, united as one.
Uh, please take the roll.
Councilmember Johnstone?
Present.
Councilmember Richardson?
Present.
Councilmember Crossman?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Hess?
Here.
Councilmember Brooks?
Here.
Councilmember Kaminsky?
Here.
Mayor Dinkins up here.
All right, can we get an agenda approval? Councilmember Smith?
I would like to amend the agenda, um, the approval to remove under new business, item D, resolution six four three.
All right, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, discussion? I'll learn about why.
You don't tell me why, I'll tell you why.
No. Um, this is not a Yelm specific thing. This is gonna have me hearing on the outcome of the proposition. I do think that resolution six four four is important because of the passes of what we're gonna do with the money. However, looking at past resolutions of what a resolution is, I don't see where it holds any value. It's, it's representing a county thing, so.
Okay, any further discussion?
That's, that's what was on the ballot.
Councilmember Richardson?
That's referring to what was on the ballot, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilor Hess?
Uh, and she, uh, councilmember Smith, yes, is correct. This is a county issue. But by the city supporting it and showing that they support it, uh, helps those voters who are reading, looking at the issues and trying to help things. So it's, it's kinda like somebody endorsing you for mayor or endorsing Richardson for a council member. That's all we're doing. Uh, that's the way I read this resolution is that's the city and, uh, doing an endorsement that this is a good resolution.
Is there any further discussion? Councilor Brooks?
I would also like to add that we are not the only city government that is interested in quote endorsing, um, or supporting this Prop one by a vote. Lacey City Council is, has done the very same thing.
Right. Any further discussion before we vote on whether or not to remove it or not? Councilor Smith and Councilman.
Okay, one more point I would like to say is this has nothing to do with a personal, I'm talking about the city. So it's not just, I'll put that out there.
Councilor Crossman?
I agree with Councilmember Smith that I still think it's something that city should be involved in. We don't do this with anything else since I've been here. We're any other things that have come on the ballot. It is seem kind of odd to me that we pick one to show support or not when it's individual vote. It's not like the city's voting on it. It's individual. It's on the ballot. It's anyone can vote for it, so.
Councilor Richardson?
So as far as I'm referring to Smith, so do you think this would be more of an appropriate resolution to talk about after the voting process has been completed?
No, I, I'm not suggesting that we remove number E.
No, D. Right, after maybe, cause, cause this has to do with the thing on the ballot, right?
Right.
So then because of that, it's almost like you said endorsing it, so let the people.
Let the people certainly in county decide.
Yes, and then if we need to adopt something or endorse, well, I, I see where you're going. I understand.
Hold on, Councilor Hess?
Uh, reference to the statement clear, uh, cities don't endorse. We have endorsed, the city of Yelm has endorsed in the past various propositions of levies, bonds for the school district of saying that this is a good thing or some or something else. They've also done in the past for other statewide issues as well as county issues. All this is, again, is just saying and having us have the discussion when it comes time and then doing the vote on it as a council of is the city going to endorse it or not?
Okay, is there any further discussion before we vote whether to remove it from the, from the, um, this is not the passage of the actual amendment. This is just, uh, remove it from the, to, or excuse me, remove it, resolution number six four three from our agenda. Is there any further discussion before we vote on that, on the removal? All right, so a yay vote would be confirming we would remove item D from the agenda. So I'm clear on that? All right, we'll take a roll call vote. Uh, councilmember Johnstone, how do you vote?
Yay, to remove.
Councilmember Richardson?
Yay.
Councilor Crossman?
Yes.
Councilor Smith?
Yay.
Councilor Hess?
No.
Councilor Brooks?
No.
Councilor Kaminsky?
No.
Motion approves, is approved four to three. Um, we will remove item D from the, um, agenda. All right, moving on to item number three, special presentations. There's none scheduled. Moving on to item number four, public comment. We have, oh, my apologies, my apologies. Um, can we get an agenda approval as amended? Councilor Smith moves to approve the agenda as amended. Second, my Councilor Crossman, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries. All right, now on to special presentations, none scheduled. Now on to public comments. Uh, we do have two speakers. I'll just testify if, uh, nothing's on. We're gonna, yeah, if it's on something, um, on the actual agenda, please wait for that time. If it's not, please, um, go ahead and come to the podium and speak. You have three minutes and, um, Kyle Phillips, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to talk about the, the alley improvement, um, here on the south side of the, um, Yelm Avenue, let's say. I improved the backside of my business because, well, you guys offered a grant, a five thousand dollar grant, which was very generous in going way over budget, fifty five thousand dollars later. I'm thinking, okay, was this worth it or not? And I'm really hoping it was. Um, but halfway through the remodel, uh, somebody from the city came to me and says, this looks really nice. We're really glad you're doing this. I think we're gonna move forward with our alley improvement. I go, well, that's great too. And he goes, um, but we have to cut it off to vehicles. It's gonna be foot traffic only. Like, you've gotta be kidding me. And if, and if I may, I'd like to, um, give you guys a couple pictures. I don't have a, like, a good modern printer, uh, that has colored cartridges. But it really shows how much we use our property. Now, granted, the city has a ten-foot easement, um, that we're supposed to be taking over. We're not supposed to take delivery trucks in the suicide lane on the main highway. It's really not smart. Um, but we all use parking behind our buildings on our own property, non-city property on our own property. So some of those pictures show the dentist office taking up all Washington Street parking on the south side. Um, the pharmacy employee is taking up all the parking on the north side. And I know there's, there's kind of a plan to make that a one-way street to try to make more parking. But it's, that's not gonna work for me. Um, and you guys have owned a lot over there by H and R block, and you wanna make that a parking lot for everybody to use, which is really great. Um, improving the alley and making a parking lot is really great. But sometimes people forget it rains a lot here. And people aren't gonna walk a quarter mile just to grab a beer and a sandwich and go home. It just doesn't work that way. We can't have that alley blocked off to vehicle traffic. It's really, really important that we have that. Now, I welcome the alley being improved. Um, I, I spent two months making my place look really good, trying to get a new kind of a classic clientele. Unfortunately, we had a little setback last Tuesday when I found some homeless tweakers passed out with needles laying around. We had to clean up and kick them out. We gotta figure that out. But, um, we can all figure it out, but we really need that traffic. I talked to, um, the guys at the salon. I was hoping they'd be here tonight. But they're pretty adamant, we need that parking. They use it too. Uh, Sonia wants to open up her bar and grill soon too.
Thoughts, please?
Um, and I was hoping she might be here, but she had her son's football practice. And, and, uh, the Ho Restaurant, they use all their rear parking by the alley too. We wanna leave the street parking to customers. Cutting off our live blood would just be horrendous. I really wanna see the alley improved.
Thank you, Kyle. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Councilor Hess?
Um, and it's only cause we, excuse me, had a discussion during the, uh, public service meeting and wanting a clarification. If I remember correctly, that alleyway, that's not even, you're not even supposed to be parking there. It's a drive-through. It's to for a delivery truck to come, which, uh, according to the design at both ends, there's gonna be posts that can be picked up, removed. Delivery trucks can come in, the trash truck can come in, but that alleyway, according to code and all, is no parking at all. That's supposed to be open and as a vehicle, uh, at this time, and it's a vehicle in one direction, one direction only, which is that direction.
Correct. Is there any other questions, comments from the council? Thank you, Kyle, and we will be working with you, trying to make the least impact as we can and try to make it actually helpful for you. Um, I, I know that someone originally mentioned what, um, reached out to you regarding the project. There'll be more people reaching out in the future, um, in the next, I don't know, Codeans in the next few weeks or whatever, depending on what happens. We'll determine what we will do next. Um, but we are trying to work with the business owners around there, so it is the least of an impact. Um, we understand that it, it will be a transition. I truly believe that it will be more beneficial for your business when we have that. But I understand your perspective is different with the parking, um, that, um, perceived to be, you know, in the alleyway.
Let me see, one more thing.
Sure.
Um, I was electrical engineer for sixteen years. I worked for Parker, Massana Associates and both as a consulting engineer and a quarter million dollars to run grade for two alleys, a parking lot and one street. Did you guys even send out bids? Because that is ridiculous price.
Thanks. Thank you. All right, moving on to Harry Miller.
Thank you. I got a little handout here. Thank you, um, just giving you something here. And I wanna thank the, the mayor Joe and the admin Todd for setting up the, uh, business roundtable. It wasn't as a, it was pretty crazy, actually. And you guys, you know, you know, prepared for all of that, but I just wanted to recap a little bit. I appreciate it being there and I really look forward to the next one. Okay, ninety-five-nine-seven impressions, um, the October eighteenth. Thank you, Mayor Joe and City Todd for, and the admin Todd for hosting this first meeting. Comment period was heated, honest, focused. Some felt that the city was fostering a culture of no. One, city is disconnected from the needs of business. City is not consistent with the application of codes equally suspected favoritism and a good old boy system. There were interesting comments. City employees don't all live in Yelm and don't seem interested in who our businesses are. The city is slow to help businesses work out compliance issues and is quick to find without understanding the questions and code issues. The city does not seem to recognize the dollar cost, impact to businesses and does not always seem to care. The city assumes all businesses are well-funded and conform whatever the regulations may cost. They do not seem to know that many are on the edge of, um, on the edge financially. Yelm businesses are consistently hit up for donations for many worthy local causes and many struggle to respond. As the money supply tightens, inflation impacts and the shoppers change their habits, the struggle is real. Seven, some of the stories told showcased an indifference to the plight of our businesses and a lack of curiosity as to the struggle that the city is perceived to be uninterested, apathetic and adversarial. Some felt like there were personal attacks on their specific businesses. Eight signage and access were discussed as impediments to customers trying to shop in Yelm. The city is not perceived as being an equal partner in the quest to have a strong movement forward. Many of the business owners have roots in Yelm and others found Yelm to be attractive to their interests. Uh, there were encouraging words said to the city. Takeaways are the city needs to pursue a partnership and intimacy with local businesses that looks to enable their mutual success. The city needs to respect their partners and listen. Traffic and parking is a work in progress. The bypass is still an issue. Alleyway improvements need to be understood by owners who use their property for customer parking. The city needs to have a culture that encourages city employees involved in planning and enforcement to spend time understanding the nature and the needs of each business. Money is changing. Grant pools are drying up. Collected tax revenue is precious and needs to be spent with vision, wisdom and respect. Signage and access issues need to be addressed before the Christmas shopping season. If only temporary, these timely accommodations must be made. The Yelm business community should look forward to the next roundtable. Joe and Todd will probably be more prepared for an open, robust discussion. Uh, Yelm is an awesome town. Let's love each other and work to know and understand all who live and shop here. Christmas is coming respectfully. Santa, nine-eight-five-nine-seven, vote. It's the heart of democracy.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed meeting you. Councilor Richardson?
Uh, you know, I thank you for this report and I'm, I'm really impressed that you guys even had one of those. I think this is probably the beginning. It sounds like there's a disconnect of communication and, and hopefully that continues to go forward as you guys continue to, uh, host these. And, um, but yeah, I, I, that, that we need to somehow have a communication where everybody feels involved. And I think that's the biggest thing that's missing is, um, and when that formula, it's hoping that gets better, but thank you for the report on that.
There were a lot of people who wanted to be there. There are other businesses that couldn't. And, uh, and I'm not a business in this town. I get to be Santa, you know? But I figured you guys needed to hear a little bit of what went on. This was kind of a synopsis. And I know, uh, Todd took a ton of notes on this thing and the mayor was very responsive, so.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Hess?
Um, I just want to, uh, speak up for the public service and public employees. The comment that the codes are not equally enforced, that there's favoritism, a good old boy. I don't, I don't believe there's truth to that. I've sat on that committee and we hear about those things for the past couple of years. And the issues are brought up and it's, it's told why things are the way they are. Um, and I can give some examples. There's the, I know there's an issue with the gravel parking lots. People want gravel and they say, well, some have gravel, some don't. And yes, there's a few businesses that have the gravel parking area. That's because they were grandfathered under when the new codes came about. In reference to, and you brought it up in here, the, uh, signage. We had that discussion and the signage that was there, um, it's the temporary signage that was asked to be removed. We were briefed on it during the public, public service committee meeting that Yelm is very liberal about the signage. We allow it to be up for longer than surrounding cities allow it. And we, you know, we, we don't sit there as it says that we're quick to find. Oh, I hear from the, I, I've asked the person who does the code. I've asked Director Cole during these meetings and talked to them even offline about it. The last thing we wanna do is find. We try to work with the businesses on what is correct and what is not. And so I, I'm sorry, I just have to speak up for and defend the public service, uh, department. They do a great job. They're equal across the board. They do not have any kind of favoritism. And when they put out a notice about a particular code violation to seventeen businesses and it's only five who choose not to comply with it. I, I, I'm sorry, that's five that are choosing to violate a code that we have to either enforce or have removed from the books.
Thank you, Councilor Hess. Councilor Richardson votes.
Yeah, no, I, um, I understand where you're coming from, Hess, with that. I, I, I understand that too with, with everything that, uh, the city is doing. But what we can't negate here is that these are real emotions and feelings that these business owners are having, whether or not what they, that may be true or not. So it's not, it's not saying, you know, this isn't true. What it's saying, what we're really trying to talk about is regardless of the truth, people are feeling this thing and that is real, that is real. So the feeling of business owners has to be somewhat acknowledged. And I, and I think this is the beginning of what you're attempting to do, um, because and with all due respect, as I'm not trying to argue with you, um, because after what you said there, there's some people are immediately gonna pick up a fence and they're gonna say, oh, what, you don't think what we're saying is, 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 is worthy of talking about? Uh, but you're defending them, which I understand, because as a councilman, you're always in this position of trying to like listen over here and listen over there. So whether or not that may be true, what we need to respect is that this, these are feelings of real business owners that, that this is what they're feeling. So whether we have to educate them or partner with them, that has to be a step forward. We can't just say, hey, you're wrong. We're right. We can't just do that. We have to have a conflict.
I do wanna point out that this is from Harry's perspective as well. This isn't an actual what occurred, what happened, what everything that was said. This is from his perspective. Um, Councilor Kaminsky?
I was just gonna say it's the perfect forum for your new business roundtable and I would just encourage all the businesses to participate, share their emotions, feelings, merge it with the code. We have to change things. We have to change things, but it's, I hope they will participate.
All right, thank you very much. All right, thank you very much, Harry.
I wanted to bring this because nobody else was there and I'm not a business.
We were gonna go ahead and recap this anyway, but thank you, Harry. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. We have a amended May, from May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, Yelm City Council meeting minutes. I believe this is a change vote. Is that accurate? Uh, a vote that was reported incorrectly and we are fixing that. Okay, is there any, um, discussion? Councilor Hess?
I'm making a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilor Kaminsky, now any, any, um, discussion? All those in favor say aye? Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries. All right, moving on to new business. Under item A, we have orange number eleven oh seven, image title eighteen of the Yelm municipal code adopting chapter twenty-eight point one nine of the flood damage prevention. I'll be doing my best Patrick Hughes impression. Um, so he's at a conference right now, so the ordinance in front of you is we, every few years FEMA, which is, you know, our emergency management for the federal government, comes out with new floodplain ordinances and we have to adopt those ordinances to keep our, um, flood insurance intact. If you won't adopt those ordinances, you can't get flood insurance in the city. Um, so that's what this is. You'll see a lot of changes. Um, just there's revision to eighteen-one-one, environmental review, eighteen-two-one, critical areas and resource lands, eighteen-oh-two definitions. Um, and the map adoption clause that was added to this, you're gonna see a lot of lines, a lot of changes in there, but it's all required by the federal government. Um, if not adopted, this is what will happen. We'll be ineligible for flood insurance throughout this area. New insurance policies cannot be sold and existing policies cannot be renewed. So everybody would lose their flood insurance if we didn't adopt this. And this does follow the Washington model ordinance also. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Councilmember Crossman?
Here, Garcia, how much properties in flood zone in city limits?
Uh, surprisingly, because we have a canal that has a flood zone quite a bit.
I think so.
Yeah, the canal is a surprising flood zone, a lot of people think about. So, and we also have, Yelm Creek has a flood area too. Um, and Thompson Creek has a smaller flood area, but also as well. And so, Member Richardson, do you have a comment, question?
So this is, um, again, we lose our flood insurance if we do not update the ordinance and adhere by it?
Yeah, all people in the city would lose their flood insurance. Homeowners would lose their flood insurance, commercial, everyone would lose their flood insurance, not just the city. Councilor Richardson?
Unless there's further discussion, I'm gonna give a motion to, uh, motion to approve ordinance one-one-zero-seven, adopting chapter eighteen point one-nine to the Yelm Municipal Code, flood damage prevention and related updates to Y and T chapters eighteen point zero-two, eighteen point eleven and eighteen point two-one.
Councilor Brooks?
I'll second that.
Any other further discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? Motion carries. And I'm sorry, Councilor Johnstone, you're still on here, correct?
I am.
Yes.
Okay, I will slow it down for you to, uh, go and make your statements as well, your vote.
Yay, I said yay, sorry.
Great, thank you. Um, E N F's decision, um, ordinance number eleven oh seven is approved. Thank you, council. Moving on to item B under new business, amendment number two to the public service agreement with S C J Alliance for the one-way couplets, parking lot and active alleyway project. Cody?
Yeah, I'm gonna share a concept drawing for you. And I'm gonna try to be, um, because I've, I've noticed there is a lot of concerns about Sally Way, um, as Mr. Phillips said, along with other people that have talked about it. So I'm gonna try to address as much as I can and kind of get you guys in a spot that you feel okay. Um, to talk about this, this is a concept that was, if you remember, council began the year allotted some money to do traffic studies, concepts, um, and some other design elements of the alleyway, one-way couplets and parking lot. So this is a section, specifically the section we're referencing, which is the alleyway and parking lot. Uh, let's see, like, sorry, mouse here, Tim. Okay, I was zooming in a little bit. Um, so on this, the amendment you're looking at is amendments to that original contract to add the alleyway and parking lot. First, I wanna address the cost of this because that's, you know, people, why does it cost so much for this? Two things have to happen when you do something to this project. One is right-of-way acquisition because some of these lots, they have right-of-way back here for driveway access or parking. We have to pay them to take away some of those things. And that requires a, a firm and lawyers to talk with them, negotiate with them to get that cost settled. That's a big chunk of this contract is just that right-of-way piece. Um, because we wanna be fair, we wanna give fair market value if someone's losing the ability to do something. Um, if someone, you know, is being hindered by this, we wanna give that. So that's part of it. The other part that's added in this is community outreach. So all of these business owners, once, if this is approved, will be brought in for design elements of this. So, um, as you know, Mr. Phillips said, the white horse, all those businesses will be brought into design meetings to go over things to make sure they match what they want. We don't wanna build something that isn't useful to them. If they need driveway access, we figure out a way to make that work. If we need alleyway access, we figure out a way to make that work. It's, it's really driven by those businesses because it's an extension of that. Um, you know, we also have other elements in here. We're putting power poles all through this area, um, with lighting on them, so food trucks can plug in, uh, speakers be plugged outside. You can have, um, you know, multiple things plugged in through this area here, which is not normal. If I was just doing an alleyway, we wouldn't need those elements. There's also a water main that runs under this alleyway that needs to be replaced. One of the things we want to do, instead of replacing that water main later, we wanna replace that water main before we put these pavers down. Because what we don't wanna do is put these pavers down and then a year later go, hey, it's time to replace the water main. Let's rip all the pavers up. So part of that does include that coordination to get that water main installed. The other aspect we'll look at is this parking lot, is we are creating the parking lot for the future. So it's gonna be designed in a way that would allow for it to be raised up. We're not gonna put the elements in there yet. Um, but it'll have a design that'll allow it to be turned into a parking garage at some point. Um, we're not, we're not installing those elements. We're just getting that design done. Also, there's gonna be electrical infrastructure put in here for the possibility of E V chargers in the future. The world is moving that direction. So it's makes sense to put the electrical infrastructure in now and not come back later in five, ten years when somebody goes, hey, why didn't you put electrical infrastructure in there for E V charging? You have to dig it all up. So there's a lot of engineering aspects that aren't typical of a, just a base parking lot that's gravel and line. Um, and like I said, the right-of-way acquisition is like the biggest, is the biggest point of this. And that's what requires most money is that right-of-way acquisition negotiations and also those meetings with those businesses. Um, the other aspect I wanna point out of this is there is multiple phases to this project. We wanted to do the couplets. We wanna do all that. These are the first two we could tackle that were the cheapest. So the parking lot, um, the whole reason we're doing the parking lot in alleyways, those can get done the fastest. One-way couplets require a lot more right-of-way acquisition. They'll require more design work, whereas the parking lot is a lot simpler design. It could be something we can get done before next summer is why we chose the parking lot. The alleyway will take longer because of that right-of-way acquisition. To give you an example, Mosman Avenue, to get right-of-way acquisition from some homeowners and the golf course took six years. Um, we don't expect the right-of-way acquisition to go this long because we're gonna be working in joint with those businesses. This should be a benefit for those businesses. They should have, you know, it should help them. It shouldn't hurt them. So our goal is to make the alleyway as good as possible for them and for us. And if it doesn't work the way they want it, then we adjust it. We bring it back to council. We make the alleyway look slightly different. Um, some of the elements of this alleyway we're gonna have up is there's gonna be a, this is an elevated walkway right here. So you'll actually, it'll be a kind of a traffic calming device. It'll have a speed bump on it. There will be a sign area over here that'll hang a hanging sign. So maybe on farmer market Saturdays, there's a sign saying farmer's market here, um, during the barbecue rally. It can be barbecue rally down this alleyway. If there's an event at maybe a local tavern, you could have a sign hanging over there that directs the people to that. So it's just a cool spot to put a sign plus with all that lighting in there. Um, the other aspect, we've reached out to most of these business owners or some way, shape or form, um, is Kyle Phillips, I'm sorry, I keep mentioning you because you're here. Um, I, I mentioned, I just talked briefly with you. That was me the other day that just talked to him and said about the alleyway and how the design is going. Um, each of these business owners have reached out to some extent that, hey, this is gonna happen, but we wanna work with you. Nothing is designed yet. This is just conceptual. And so we just wanna, all of them have been talked to in some way, shape or form, including Habitat and, uh, and all those other places. So we are keeping, we're gonna bring them along as we go. It's not gonna be designed in a vacuum. Um, and S C J is the same company that did the concept drawings. They did the vision plan. So that's the company we continue to use for this because they have the best start, Cody. Um, this process started in two thousand nineteen with the, when they did the downtown corridor study where they designed all of this. And if you remember in that corridor study, I wanna point out something is the alleyway. And if you remember in that corridor study, I want to point out something is, the alleyway actually went all the way to here. And got rid of all of this parking. We already pulled the alleyway back to here, so this is a corner of White Horse Tavern right here. And so the alleyway would end where their building begins. Um, because we knew this would be a huge parking impact, and we didn't want to ruin parking for, you know, Tim's Pharmacy, Bay Street Cafe, so we pulled that alleyway back. And we've already made adjustments in the conceptual design. Originally, this was gonna be completely blocked off and allowed no vehicle access. Now there's removable ballers that we have planned to do here to allow vehicle access for delivery trucks and whatnot. So there's already things we're doing, even though we haven't started designing, that the conceptual phase is flushed out. Um, and then this will tie directly into, obviously, our one ways, as you can see down here. This is all on-street parking here and here. And then you have all more on-street parking here. So we're increasing the parking exponentially in this downtown corridor to help these businesses. Because the biggest complaint we have from these businesses is we have no parking, right? That's, I hear it all the time from all these businesses. Um, so trying to get more parking for these businesses to allow them to grow, to expand, and not have to worry about the CBD requirements of parking. Right? Our CBD requires X amount of spots for square footage. If we have parking nearby, they can expand without having to meet those requirements, because there's on-street parking available. So, um, again, this council budgeted the money for this design this year, one-point-three million. Um, and we budgeted money next year also to do more. We're only gonna spend about a million of this total for designing construction. So just over a million total will be done. That'll leave money left over. That leftover money, we're gonna use to find grants to do the one-way couplets. And, um, Fourth Avenue is also something we added on to turn into a one-way. I don't have that, because that's not part of this, but I just wanna. We're not gonna spend all the money budgeted this year, because we're gonna use that money for seed money for grants next year. Um, I'll be happy to answer your questions.
Council Richardson.
Well, I got like three questions, um, but I'm looking at this, and I'm seeing like more parking spot availability than there ever was. As far as pre-existing. And, um, so you answered my question on parallel, but my biggest question is, um. It's gonna be how many more parking spots versus what don't exist. And, but the other thing I'm really concerned about is. I, I work at a church, and when I park my car there, I'm the first one there, but I park far away.
Yeah.
So when people come and visit, they can have formal parking. So being that there's city parking and city employee parking. You as the city, would you encourage people to use parking at a certain place, so other people can actually use parking something, you know what I mean?
That, that's the hope. Um, obviously, we can't control where people park. Um, well, you can to an extent, but they can park where they want, but that's always a good practice is. You know, I often try to park far away when I'm in different spots, but I, I agree with you. We encourage them to, but we can't force them to. We are creating a very nice walkways directly from this parking lot to all of these businesses here.
Do you know the actual distance from the parking lot, maybe to the White Horse?
Um, I couldn't, I don't have the numbers. I can measure it. Um, I'll measure it after this, and I'll give it to you before the end of the meeting.
And then just the other thing is, how many spots do you think you've increased as far as parking spaces?
I, I think we have almost sixty-five here in this parking lot, and this is a conceptual. We might get more when we flush it out. And then you have roughly twenty-plus here, and then you have five to six on each side here. And then another, you know, you know, tennis here, parking area. So we're talking at least a hundred-plus parking spots we've added to this area. For an area where there's comments?
Councilmember Brooks.
I remember we mentioned that earlier this year, we voted. Um, on this project and the spending towards it. And I asked specifically if these businesses were already being reached out to. And so even then, earlier in the year, they were being talked to, just not all of them.
Correct. We didn't know how many businesses it would impact. We had mentioned it briefly. So, um, Tim's Pharmacy example, um, I talked with them offline multiple times about, hey, this product's coming. We don't know what it's gonna impact you, just be aware it's coming. Right? Um, mo- over the last like month, they've been reached out a little more intimately. Again, those are just, this project's coming, you'll be in the design group, and that's all we know, because we haven't reached the engineering phase of it. We're just in conceptual. We're doing this alleyway. This is gonna happen. Is there any questions you have? You know, and not, not really any questions, but we're going to bring you into the design work. And I think, I think that's the key with this, is that the businesses, we haven't even started design, right? This is just conceptual. It may not, it may look nothing like this. We want the businesses to be partners in this. There's, we have it in the budget scheduled to meet with them, bring them in. Have roundtables to talk about these things, to flesh out the ideas that may not work, and come up with even better ideas, and hopefully that's what we can do with. You know, this turn, it should be a benefit to the city, and that's what, you know, council wanted when we designed this. It should be something that brings people downtown. Not forces businesses to move out because it can't function, so.
I can see your explanation. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
So I'm still a little bit hung up on the parking part, only because. All the, like you mentioned, you know, they park behind, so all these businesses have their little. They are now, everybody working's going to be parking somewhere. They're gonna be taking up a lot of the spaces. Is that correct?
I mean, I, so.
I mean, I don't know how many people you have working there at any given time, but you know, there's, I don't, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do understand what you're saying. So, we did talk to, so the biggest one we were worried about is Salon Novo, right here. They have two, you can even see it on this map, where they have two cars parked here, right? Um, I believe this is Masonry's accessway, that won't change. Um, and then you have someone who parks here from this business, um, they kind of, they park in the alleyway, which technically, they're not supposed to. So we were worried about Salon Novo. They, when we talked to them in just a brief conversation, hey, you might lose your parking. They were hopeful to what it would bring, having that back there versus what they would lose in parking. Again, nothing's fully flushed out yet, but that we, we, that was initial conversation.
Uh, would be the other one now, too. They use what, two spaces, three spaces, four.
Oh yeah, they would also, and we, we had positive conversations with them. They have a new owner now, though. Um, I believe, we, I, we haven't chatted with the new owner, we chatted with the previous owner, and they were positive in that, and we hope the new owner would be positive as well.
And we might also, there's an alleyway also between the Fell Place and the Habitat for Humanity. That there's some sort of early discussions of maybe some more there, too.
Yeah, because I understand.
Councilmember Richardson.
So just again, to reiterate, this is all concept, and so being that it's concept, this is just a dream. And what we're trying to do is present something, but then you're gonna invite these other businesses to come in, put, and maybe suggest some things that they could, you know. And, and what I'm concerned about, too, is that you said you found some tweakers and some needles out there. But then what I heard from God is that when we keep our city clean and, and up to date. Those things has, have, have left some of a chance of appearing, and vandalism is less. And so that, that, that gives me some promise there, but as, as long as we really make sure, you know, this is a concept. And you invite these businesses to, to help give you some input on, on the planning, that looks promising.
Not to change subject too much, but there was a lot of outreach done prior to in twenty-nineteen, which changed this drastically, as Cody's mentioned. I, I was on council that time, Terry was on council on that time, um, or Councilor Kaminsky, excuse me. And, um, one of the big changes that came from that, would besides that, um, what Cody already explained, was if you look at our main drag. Um, up in front of the bowling alley, in front of, um, the jewelry store, they were gonna lose parking in front of that. Um, those designs called for removal of that on-street parking, and that was something that I championed for those folks. Um, and we got that removed, so there, we left that parking in there now. Very similar to this process, there will be some pushback. And I, I get it, there's a lot of unknowns that, for business owners and unknowns for businesses, very scary. And so we are gonna be absolutely working with them a hundred percent. And at the end of the day, this is gonna be up to council to, um, when we put, um, shelves in the ground. Disrupt the council to, at that point, to, um, whether or not they want to adjust it, change it, which it can absolutely change. This gets the ball rolling, gets the parking lot plans going, the alleyway plans going, and, um. Yeah, but nothing, permanent, no construction will occur without the, um, council's consent and authorization. Councilmember Kaminsky.
I would like to make a motion to authorize Mayor Joe DePinto to sign amendment number two to the Public Services Agreement with SCJ. Alliance in the not-to-exceed amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty dollars and fifty cents. Engineering, design, and specifications of the parking lot and activated alleyway.
Councilmember Hess.
Uh, seconded.
So the motion's second. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Smith.
I have one clarifying question. So the businesses will be involved in this. If we allow this money, the businesses will be involved in the discussion.
Correct.
You're just not gonna take this money and say, go design this, and then show it to them.
It will be in the process. We have at least, I just want to, we have two design meetings to have all of that. Again, like, I'm going, I, I hope they reach out to me, too, and I'll give, I'll hold my card, but yes.
Any further questions, comments? Councilor Johnstone, do you have any other questions, comments?
No, I do not.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote then, starting on Councilmember Kaminsky. How do you vote?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Brooks.
Yes.
Councilmember Hess.
Yes.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Crossman.
Yes.
Councilmember Richardson.
Yeah.
Councilmember Johnstone.
Yes.
Uh, passed unanimously. Alright, moving on. Thank you, council. Thank you, Cody. Moving on to item C, amendment to the Tohoma Terra Master Plan Community. Gary.
Good evening, everyone. Alright, well, that's not an internal organ or anything, that's a site plan, so, um. I'm here to talk, to, uh, present the proposal to amend the Tohoma Terra Master Plan Community. The Master Plan Community was originally approved by the Young City Council in two thousand and five. So this is a, um, project that's been in the works for many years. If you've been into Tohoma Terra, you've seen that a lot of the build-out has occurred, and in fact, this would be the, the final phase. Of that Master Plan Community. So the original, uh, Master Plan Community was two-hundred-and-twenty acres. And it includes a variety of housing types. Um, we've got, uh, townhomes, single-family residences. Uh, several apartment buildings, uh, various sizes of single-family residences. Um, this is thirteen-point-seven acres, so it's a small fraction of the overall Master Plan Community as a whole. And what they're proposing, uh, is a nine-apartment buildings, which you can see those lining the front there. Along Tohoma, uh, Boulevard and Berry Valley. Those would, uh, nine-apartment buildings would represent a hundred-and-two units of apartments. And there's a one approximately eight-hundred-and-fifty-five-square-foot commercial building with a drive-through. And that is over, I believe, about lot four, yeah, probably circling the, the. So that was originally intended to be a coffee stand. We talked with the developers to make sure that it was developed in a way that it was large enough. Um, and flexible enough that if, uh, they wanted to have some other kind of business there, that would be possible. So that it wouldn't just be pinpointed for a single use. Um, there's another building of approximately sixteen-hundred-and-ninety square foot feet, which would be a commercial office building. On my staff report, there's a typo, it says a hundred-and-sixty-nine square feet, which is not really viable for commercial use, so. Um, just want to make that correction. Yeah, there, there would be, uh, two, um, either restaurant or retail buildings, depending on who wants to occupy the buildings. Uh, that would total approximately seven-thousand-and-thirty square feet. And again, that's down on lot five, you can see the, the cursor. And then finally, uh, there's a twelve-building self, self-storage facility that would have about seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine storage units. Which would be in the back there. So, um. I want to get in a little bit to the, you know, what the Master Plan Community is and why it is. We, it's actually a zone in our zoning code. It's the first place I've worked where the Master Plan Community was a zone and not an overlay on another zone. So you have the, the, the zone, and then you actually do an overlay on it. Uh, and I, it's a very short, uh, chapter in the zoning code. So I, I want to just read what the standards are, because, um, it'll explain a lot about why this is being proposed as it is. It's the intent of this chapter to provide for large-scale projects that incorporated full range of land uses where appropriate and consistent with the comprehensive plan. And it only has about, oh, eight standards. First of all, for a, a master plan community development has to be a minimum of two-hundred acres. So it has to be large enough that you can accommodate a full range of uses. Um, and some of these I won't even go into, because they're no brainers. Like, it has to be in compliance with the Washington State Growth Management Act. Has to create a safe, efficient, and economic use of land, uh, and provide public services such as transportation, water, sewer, storm drainage, et cetera. To, should provide efficient patterns of land use that were appropriate, decrease trip length of automobile travel. Increase to public transit, bicycle routes, and other alternative modes of travel. Uh, this is one that was certainly accommodating. In fact, at public services meeting today, we were talking about the fact that, you know, we do have transit service on Young Avenue. And, um, just the way that the Tohoma Terra Master Plan Community is designed and the road standard that we have there. If the, we can get intercity transit to just make a right turn at the Tohoma Boulevard, they could go down and, and, um, provide transit to that community as a whole. As it is, they're not that far from Young Avenue, so it is within walking distance for most folks, not all. Um, arrange land uses to complement and minimize impacts to existing neighborhoods. And then coordinate commercial and industrial locations and designs to impact or minimize impacts to the natural environment, so. That's the entire, pretty much the entire chapter for the Master Plan Community. And the reason there are so few standards in there as opposed to, say, um, a commercial zone or a residential zone. Is that the intent is to try to, um, incentivize, uh, you know, a more creative approach to the area. It's, um, ideally, it would be a fully self-contained community, that isn't always possible, because market drives a lot of this stuff. But it is at least designed to provide, you know, and kind of a neighborhood feel where you do have a mix of housing types and commercial uses. So when this was originally approved in two thousand and five. This area that we're looking at was just considered the commercial area of the Master Plan Community. And it was supposed to be, um, commercial only. There were going to be five commercial paths that were to be developed. And there was actually a condition in the original approval that said, before any, I, I believe I have this correct. For any residential units were constructed east of Thompson Creek, the five commercial areas had to be developed. Well, that never happened, and it didn't happen for a number of reasons. In two thousand and eight, we had the, you know, the, the recession. Um, over the years, there have been different developers which have taken this Master Plan Community on. And, uh, each and every time, they've said that the commercial aspect of the proposal just wasn't economically feasible. They couldn't make it pencil out. And initially, when we were meeting to discuss this last phase. Now, we were told the same thing, so there was, uh, the original proposal was, uh, did not include the five, um, commercials. Uh, units, but, um, obviously, it's been a sticking point with the city over the years that the commercial wasn't developed. So we came up with a proposal that could accommodate, um, you know, the, the economic needs of the developers. While still fulfilling the intent of what this was supposed to be in two thousand and five. And, um, in fact. I, and I think, I think Cody as well, we kind of prefer this to just the five commercial pads, because we're getting the five commercial uses. But at the same time, we're getting the housing units that we need, which, um, as we all know, there is definite housing shortage in the city and in the county. And every additional unit we can get, um, is, you know, what we want, so. Um, that is why, um, we are recommending approval. This did go to the hearing examiner. Um, and so there was a public hearing held, and it was noticed in the newspaper and sign was, the site was posted. And, um, notices were sent to all of the property owners within three-hundred foot of this proposal. Uh, there were some people who, um. Weren't necessarily happy with the, at least what the currently proposed, um, commercial uses are. And you have to understand that just because they're right now saying that this could accommodate a restaurant or a retail. You can't make someone do that, but you can build the building, you know, like feel the grades, you know, you build it and they will come. Something, but there will be commercial uses there. Um, there were folks who, uh, aren't happy that, um. You know, a medical facility isn't currently proposed in there. Um, and, but once again, those kinds of choices are market-driven. The city can't require a medical facility to be there. We would certainly like one, I'm sure. So this is a rendering. Um, one of the concerns we had for the, um, the storage units. In our other commercial zones, storage units have to be located five-hundred feet from, um, neighborhood collector streets. Uh, this particular zone does not require that, but we were concerned about shielding, you know. Uh, the storage units as much as possible from being seen from Tohoma Boulevard. So they presented renderings to us to show us what this would look like. As you can see, when you, uh, the previous site plan. The apartments kind of ring around. Ring around Tohoma Boulevard, and the storage units are behind it. So this is just kind of giving you an idea of what it would, would look like from Tohoma Boulevard. And I guess the last thing I will, um, read out, and then I'll just take questions if you like. Are the conditions of approval that we recommend? Are the conditions of approval that we recommended to the hearing examiner and and the hearing examiner adopted these conditions as well? So the first condition addresses the city's frustration over the years that the commercial wasn't developed. We wanted to make sure that we would have a a condition that would um ensure that before this is completely built out, the commercial is in place. So condition one, uh to sh- to ensure the commercial element of the uh master plan community is completed, the commercial structure chose by the applicant must be completed no later than commencing construction on the seventh proposed apartment building. So they can build up to six, but they can't build the seventh until all of the commercial elements of the um proposal have been constructed. Now, there was something in this that I think I just want to say for the record, the intent of this condition was for the five commercial structures, not the storage facility. We wouldn't be including that as as uh something they couldn't start constructing, but the other five would have to be done uh be- before they launch into the seventh apartment building. There were some um, there were some conditions in the two thousand and five approval about a mitigation plan to enhance the buffer of Thompson Creek. And we believe that some work was done to that effect, but we can't find any plan in the records. Nobody knows of such a plan. So um, we're including that as a condition here. A mitigation plan to enhance the buffer of Thompson Creek and associated wetlands must be approved by the city and implemented by the applicant prior prior to construction. That's probably going to be not much more than doing some some planting, some native plantings to enhance the buffer. The the area itself has already been delineated, and there are signs out there saying that it is a buffer. So that's why we think some work was done. Um. Number three, the proposed apartment buildings must be strategically placed to ensure a visual buffer between Tohoma Boulevard and the proposed mini storage facility, consistent with the renderings previously provided by the applicant. Number four, um, we were still, we're still mulling um what they have proposed for stormwater, so um, we just put in another condition that stormwater facilities must be designed to be consistent with the city's latest approved stormwater manual. The city does not commit at this point to using pervious surfaces as part of the stormwater system. So you can actually use pervious like driveways and things like that as part of your stormwater system, so long as they meet the, and that's allowed through the uh, you know, I think ecology's stormwater manual. Uh, we just have some concerns about maintenance and upkeep of it, so we're still in discussion about that. A Mazama pocket gofer screening must be completed by the certified consultant, which meets the city's screening protocols prior to the authorization of any land disturb disturbing activity. And it's my understanding that they engaged someone to do that, so I would expect they probably have one in hand. And then the last one is just, unless expressed, expressly modified by this amendment, all previous conditions of approval for the Toh- Tohoma Terra MPC remain in effect. There were lots of conditions in the two thousand and five approval that we're not trying to amend. Almost all of them have been met relating to traffic and such, so. So with that, I will take any questions you may have.
Councilor Crossman.
Appreciate your comment. Um, so, you have to remind me, it's been a while. Uh, how many meetings and how long has this amendment been kicking around, proposed?
This is a particular amendment?
Yeah, this whole idea, first starting, remember, we talked about this a while ago.
Yeah.
This.
Well, of course, I've only been here about a year, and it's been on the table since I got here. But um, I mean, it's that particular area. I had to guess, I'd say something, some sort of proposal has been proposed there numerous times since two thousand and five. But I don't really know the, that's the problem with something from two thousand and five. I don't really know the entire history. I can tell you that the files are uh.
It's not a new idea.
No.
It's not at all. It's been long since this amendment, because I remember seeing it. And then my comment is, so I talked to the builder, and this is for people looking for commercial space. They're not interested in commercial building because they're not a commercial developer. So they are willing to sell their commercial property for below market value. So I mean, nobody wants a commercial spot. It's a great opportunity to save some money.
Other questions, comments? Councilor Brooks?
I am going to make a statement. I don't like the storage. I, I so I'm curious. When you do that, can you make sure that it's one level? Is that in the plan to make sure that it's not like stacked on?
Well, I think, um, you know, the applicants here, uh we might just have them address that. I mean, from what I've seen, it looks like it is all one storage.
Okay. One level.
There might be like a, I don't know if you've seen the storage facility on the Elm Highway as you're heading toward Lacy, that's there were a couple little like little tower components that had lighting elements, and I think they do have an office proposed.
Oh, to make it look a little softer.
Yeah.
Is his name Evan Mann?
Yeah.
Um, I believe he's on online right now. He has raised his hand. Um, Evan, would you like to go and make a comment on this? We unmute him, please, and elevate him. One second, Evan. We see you. Evan, can you speak now?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Good evening. I appreciate Co- uh Gary, appreciate the introduction on the project and and as it relates to the storage, yes, the storage facilities are one-story. However, there are these parapet uh structures. The the goal there was to kind of have them match and tie into the overall property. So if you look at the uh the apartment structures, they're three stories. Um, and so they really mask the storage in the rear. But uh if you go from three stories down to a single story, uh you know, there's some visual elements there. So the idea was that some of these uh these kind of two-story look like end buildings. I don't know that those those necessarily are fully incorporated, but the idea there is to try to try to soften the look between the two uses. Uh, and try to try to make them look a little more consistent. So again, if you look, a- again, that wall there, trying to orient uh garage doors away from Tohoma Boulevard, try to orient them so that uh it's, there's a less visual impact and allow for that feel to to kind of feel like it's all part of a residential uh slash commercial uh development. So again, made made a lot of efforts and and Gary's been part of this and and to the other council members comment, yeah, we've we've been working on this with uh with staff pretty intensely over the last uh three, three to five years to try to come up with a plan that uh that satisfies a lot of the the desires of the city, and as it relates to the visual impact, the use, um the even, you know, the orientation of all the different uses. Um, and and we've gone through various iterations and kind of this is where we we've landed through multiple staff uh efforts.
Thank you, Evan. Um, Councilor Johnstone.
Uh, Mr. Cooper had mentioned that the traffic had already been addressed and taken care of, and the conditions of the traffic impact have been met. Mr. Cooper, can you briefly explain what those conditions were?
Okay, well, uh, there are no particular conditions, but what we did in the review of it, there was a traffic study done in two thousand and five. And uh we required the applicants to uh revisit that two thousand and five traffic study by having a traffic consultant review it and see if it was still applicable. And so they did, and the consultant um reported back to us that this proposal would actually generate less traffic than what was originally proposed, because and part of the original proposal was a gas station, which is a a heavily trafficked type of commercial use. Uh, but we then, we don't, because we're planners and not traffic engineers, we have a consultant that we use to review basically third-party review. So their consultant gives us their findings. We send it to our consultant and say, do you concur with this? I said, would you do a thorough review? I sent it to our consultant. He said, I don't think you really want me to spend a lot of time on this, because it it's definitely going to have less traffic impact than what was proposed proposed in two thousand and five. So the conditions uh from two nine, and I, you know, Cody might be better able to uh rattle them off. Uh, the conditions from two thousand and five um require them to um mitigate for uh certain intersections, wasn't it?
Yes.
I I can't remember what intersections. I apologize for that. But the the thing that's current that applies to this project, like any any project, is based on the trips that they generate for traffic. They pay uh twelve hundred and
Yeah.
It's twelve hundred, twelve hundred dollar per per trip impact fee, traffic impact fee to the city that we use for traffic improvement projects.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you, Councilor Johnson. Councilor Hess?
Yes, um, because we have the developer online, there's a question I have for him. And I've heard it many months when discussing this within the uh uh public service meetings, when uh this would come up, the fact that you cannot find any kind of commercial development. And my question for you, sir, is when you are making that statement, are you reaching out to the Yellam Chamber of Commerce and asking them how many small businesses are trying to find retail space? Or are you looking at stores like Best Buy, Lowe's, those kinds of big national chain stores to fill commercial space?
Yeah, my, I assume I'm still unmuted?
Yep.
All right, uh, so in response to that, yeah, we we um in our efforts to kind of figure out how this piece would position uh commercially, um, we reached out to numerous different uh small businesses, uh, you know, mostly local, local chains or local develop, local businesses. I mean, you have Furelli's down the corner, but the reason Furelli's picked where it is is because it's on the main street. Every developer, every, every uh, you know, business that we spoke to, the the primary goal for them is is visibility on that main street. And so we all, we enlisted the help of a couple of real, a couple of commercial real estate uh uh consultants to kind of figure out what, how this would position. And uh and what we found was that, yeah, there is some small demand off the main drag for for maybe a coffee shop like like we have shown, some office space. We we have a couple of small retail and and restaurant spaces that will will be developed. Um, but overall, uh, the the demand for uh this, this vast area of commercial um and and the desire of most, I would say ninety-nine percent of your commercial uh ventures are to be on uh Yellam Avenue.
You have anything further, Councilor Hess?
So, and this is just from my education, then. What you're telling me is that and when it comes down to developing retail and commercial for the city of Yellam, if we don't develop it on five oh seven or five ten, we're not going to be able to get any kind of commercial development. In other words, we will not be able to get daycare centers, fitness centers, uh beauty salons, uh small little restaurants that might, you know, be nice little uh treasures within the community. In other words, we we need to redesign the city so that we can get the commercial that we need, and we just need to give up on trying to have the commercial development within the communities such as yours.
I can't speak to the overall uh at the city at large. I can only speak to our experience with this particular property. And uh and what we, you know, in our efforts to uh attract investment, commercial, commercial ventures, and in our our responses from uh commercial real estate brokers, uh I can only speak to this particular site uh positioned better for these small, small retail, small uh office and coffee shop that we're proposing.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments? Councilor Brooks?
I'd like to ask a clarifying question, and that is did the developer reach out to the Chamber of Commerce of Yellam?
Um, I don't believe the conversation was held with the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay.
Any further questions, comments?
Councilmember Crossman. Motion to approve amendment to the Tohoma Terra Master Plan Community.
Secondly, Councilor Smith. Is there any further discussion? Man, or Councilor Johnstone? Any further discussion from you?
No.
Okay, we will call for a roll call vote, then. We'll start with Councilmember Johnstone. How do you vote?
Yay.
Council Richardson.
Yeah.
Council Crossman.
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilor Hess?
Yes.
Councilor Brooks?
No.
Councilor Kaminsky?
Yes.
A motion passes six to one. Thank you, council. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you. Um, just one last thing. So the MPC is kind of, um, you know, you notice you didn't see a resolution. Um, the last time the MPC was approved, it was done via a letter from from the mayor to the governor. So what I will be doing is drafting a letter that uh obviously um documents that it was approved by council with those six conditions of approval and then uh for your signature.
Cool. All right, thank you. Uh, since item D was stricken from the agenda, we will move on to item E, resolution number six four four, declaring the intent for distribution of proposition one funds.
Todd. Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and introduce resolution number six four four related to proposition one. This resolution is uh strictly declaring uh city council's intent to use the funds uh from proposition, should it pass uh for law enforcement uh purposes. This is in line with what the county uh came forward did, and I believe Lacy uh did a similar motion as well, uh just stating their intent. Um. So in the resolution, on the, on the, at the actual wording for the resolution, it says, whereas the city of Yellam has identified the need for additional law enforcement personnel, equipment, infrastructure to support law enforcement capability, secure long-term funding for law enforcement services to identify specific funding priorities of the Yellam City Council. So should this resolution pass, it is just uh indicating that the city council, as a result of the passage, would use uh this funding towards law enforcement purposes. So, and there's a couple law enforcement officers in here. If there's any questions for them or myself?
Councilor Kaminsky.
I thought the ballot said something about fire as well, or is it only for police? The actual ballot had it had a, it didn't have.
Okay.
I believe it's sales and use tax for law enforcement protection. Yeah.
Councilor Crossman. How good sales tax set up? So what Yellam sales tax go up, is it county-wise, is it this rural camp, Thurston County, because you have Yellam sales tax, you have state sales tax, would that be a, another line I know for Thurston sales tax? Has added to that, or is it just in those areas outside of city that collects it?
No, so we would collect it as well. It would be applied countywide. So whatever our sales taxes now, I believe, big point nine.
Nine point three.
Nine point three. It would go to nine point five. Yeah.
This is just about the distribution of it. This is.
That's it.
We're not.
Right, you know, cities get forty percent.
That's one of the ones, is that the city's putting into it, so the city's getting back from it. So we're not taking it from the county section.
The funds we would receive would be proportionate to our uh per capita.
Estimate's around four hundred thousand for us if this passes.
Yeah.
For law enforcement. Councilor Smith?
I would like to motion to approve resolution number six forty-four regarding city council's intent to use any distribution from Prop one for law enforcement.
Is there a second? Councilor Brooks?
I would like to second that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Johnstone, is there any further discussion from you?
No, thank you.
All right, um, go ahead and just uh verbal call. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Who cares? Thank you, council. Thank you, Todd. All right, moving on to old business. Uh, before I do this, I believe I have to open it, or do I actually? We have ordinance uh number eleven oh five to twenty twenty-four Adlore Property Tax Public Hearing. Um, we're going to open the second public hearing on the twenty twenty-four Adlore Property Tax. For the record, it is seven oh eight. Uh, this public hearing will proceed in orderly fashion. I would like to ask cooperation on following procedure. Everyone will given, be given an opportunity to be heard. If you are online and would like to comment, please raise your hand, and I will call anyone. It's your turn to speak. Start by stating your name and address for the record. Um. Uh, before we hear from the audience, we will request staff background information. Uh, is it?
We have Stephanie.
Stephanie online. All right, Stephanie, please.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Um, so we don't have any changes to ordinance eleven oh five as of today. Thurston County has not finalized their numbers. We do expect the finalization to happen sometime in November. Um, but this is the second of two required public hearings. Um, and so that is all I have for you tonight.
Right. We'll go ahead and at this time, open the floor for uh comments from the audience. Everyone will be given an opportunity to address the city council for an initial period not to exceed three minutes. I'm requesting city council hold their questions till everyone's done. If anyone requires special accommodations or to speak, please let me know. We'll make arrangements. Um, anyone from the hall wish to testify on this? Anyone online wish to testify?
No hands are raised.
All right, council, uh, we'll close the hearing at seven ten. All right, Councilmember, we'll close the hearing at seven ten. Councilmembers, any comments, deliberations by you? All right, Councilmember Johnstone, anything from you?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the discussion also at seven ten. The public hearing at seven ten. All right, moving on to standing committee reports, Public Safety Committee.
No meeting.
Public Services Committee.
Uh, let's see, we talked about the, we got a small briefing from Director Colt about the trail. Uh, we brought, it'll be brought before council on November fourteenth. Uh, hopefully, and that's when the bids will have come in, and they're looking, they're being projected as being within or below budget for the trail. Uh, and he, he showed some of the renderings of what it would look like, and we talked about some of the amenities that would be there, like little kiosks that will kind of explain what you're looking at, when you're looking out into the view. Uh, so it looks like it'll be a really good thing. We also have a code change that's going to be coming up before us. Uh, it's the adjustment. The adjustments is in reference to street parking. And it's to give a better definition. Currently, the way the code is written, it's not very easy to understand by the layman. You know, if you're an attorney, you can understand it, but if you are a, a community member, it's not that easy to understand. And the driving force behind that was the police off, the police department, as well as some other, uh, staff saying that, you know, for us to enforce the code, we have to be able to explain it a little bit better. So that's going to be coming before us. Uh, so we already talked about Toma Terra, the dog park, uh, that's coming along well. And it's, there's nothing holding up on it, if I remember correctly, right now. Uh, we are having, uh, people and businesses, uh, chiming in to sponsor various things for the dog parks, that's gonna help the dog park out. And then we discussed the alleyway and the parking lot in this meeting. Other than that, nothing else.
All right, thank you. Um, Finance Committee?
Uh, no meeting.
All right, moving on to Mayor's, Mr. Staff reports.
Okay, got a few things for you tonight. Uh, from the Finance Department, our accountability audit is ongoing, it should be wrapped up in the next few days. Uh, from the police and court world, um, we participated in a lead discussion today with prosecutors, uh, in the county, and the mayor and I were there. Uh, lead is a law enforcement assisted diversion program. Um, there's actually quite a bit to it. Um, anyone who wants more information, just see me after this or see Chief Carlson. But anyway, a lot of, a lot of information today about the lead program, that was really interesting and a lot of good stuff there. Police are still searching for one applicant to fill a vacant position. Uh, they're also working with county jurisdictions to implement a new management system. It's ongoing. Um, from the IT department, they're working on creating a disaster recovery plan for IT-related infrastructure, uh, which is, which is great work from our IT department, and they're also working with the police department on the records management system to make sure it's, uh, it'll work great for us as well. From the executive department, uh, you heard about the business roundtable, and you already got the, kind of the update. My notes are similar, maybe not identical to Mr. Miller's, but I have similar notes. And it was a, um, it was a action-packed hour and a half, I will put it that way. Still recovering the Mariner. It, I tell you, it, it honestly was a, was really well. Uh, as, as frustrating it was, I think, for some businesses, they were very appreciative that it was offered to them. Um, they expressed that multiple times, and they even reached out following the meeting to express their appreciation for offering that venue um, to get people in that same room together. Um, and just, uh, just to touch base on that, there's been numerous conversations and some ideas that the, the mayor and I and other departments are already looking into on how we can, uh, solve some of those, uh, concerns and issues, um, that were expressed at that meeting. So I think a lot of good came out of that meeting, um, and I think by the next one we provide, I think in February is what we said quarterly. Um, we hope to have some good direction on, uh, more short and long-term, uh, solutions to help our businesses, uh, feel more welcome in our community. So pretty excited about that. Five oh seven Millrow property is closed, it is officially done. Uh, paperwork has been signed, um, so obviously we'll begin conversations, uh, with council regarding that property. Training and different conferences attended by Yelm employees over the last week include the Washington Association of Public Representatives Office, uh, training, grant administration training, pavement management training, as well as, uh, attending the AWC Member Expo. From the expo, I get a little, cool little plaque here, we'll show you that we received. So this is Risk Management Service Agency twenty twenty-three Yelm. Uh, we were recognized in three different areas, loss control recognition, loss control leader, and an engaged member. So this was given to us, uh, last week in Leavenworth at that meeting.
Shout out to Karen, who runs our HR department, she's been really great at, um, leading us on, getting all these certifications and awards from AWC and Risk Management.
Yeah, that was my next portion, but thank you.
Sorry to steal your thunder, Todd.
We'll identify that, but anyway, yeah, we got a great HR department, very active HR department, and, um, we're pretty proud, um, of this as well, so that's all I got.
Any questions for Todd? One thing that I also learned from the Mayor's Exchange in Leavenworth, there was a lot of good takeaways from that. One is, um, I, I like to encourage you all to take your elected officials essentials, some of those are required by RCW. But also, it makes you a, a better council member and more whole council member. It shows you best practices from other cities, what other city council members go through. Um, there, there's one specific for mayors, obviously the mayor's changed some of that, that I would attend, but there's council members specifically for other council members. They all, um, group up, um, there's a few, there's a few locations coming up. Um, this essentials class is offered online, but it's also in person as well. The next one, um, is December ninth, it'd be wonderful, and we have a training budget that is, is designed for all of y'all to, um, utilize. Councilor Brooks has been great at utilizing that, um, attending a lot of different trainings. Ultimately, it would be great if you could get certified as a municipal in the AWC's municipal leadership program. That would, it just shows that you've completed all these different programs, including elected, elected officials, essentials, but it also gives you, um, other suggestions or other classes, courses, uh, like Robert Cruz Award, or in proper meetings. Just, just being a better council member in general, uh, and, uh, just elected official, mayors too. I've completed both, uh, um, the normal course, the standard course, as well as the advanced leadership. Um, it, it's very helpful. And plus, it's good networking as well, you can chat with other council members, other, uh, city officials too. So I encourage you to attend that, and we'll of course get you the information for that. And, um, we'll have, we'll be more than welcome, or more than happy to sign you up for them as well. I also attended a training, uh, different training than what other staff has been doing. Um, at Ry Judo and Brazilian Jitsu here locally in Yelm. It's something our police officers are attending, uh, Chief Carlson and I attended, um, this last Friday. And what these officers do every, it's, we have, is it twice a month that they attend in different? Yeah, so there's two shifts, and they also, every, every Friday, there's basically a training, two different shifts. And, um, they go through quite the war, and I, I did everything with them, and, uh, the warm-up in itself, the exercise, it's a lot. Uh, if, if nothing else, it keeps them in good shape. But, but more than that, it trains them on less lethal, um, ways to defend themselves and as well as the suspects. Making sure that they have the training to, uh, and know how to handle a lot of different situations. Uh, I've got, uh, I, I, and I also got to meet up with our, um, one of our newer officers who, um, who slammed me pretty hard into the ground and, uh, multiple times, and so a lot of that is the
Like jiu-jitsu.
Yeah, jiu-jitsu, exactly. And yeah, it's just, uh, using the force against them, and it was, yeah, quite interesting. And, um, I, I'm still sore from it like a week later. Um, other than that, I attended a, um, marketing tour stop that, uh, Olympia, Experience Olympia and Beyond put on. And it was here locally at our ingenious, um, boutique over here, it's an art gallery, um, right by the skate park. It's a wonderful little, um, boutique, but we did little water towers. Uh, we, we painted water, I haven't done it since like, uh, my elementary school. But it was wonderful to chat, not only with the business owners themselves, but they brought in, um, journalists from, uh, Vancouver, Canada, from Seattle, and from Portland to talk about Yelm, as well as other Thurston County stops, and, um, just market at Yelm and other places around here. Um, as much as we could, talk positively about us and what we have to offer, so it was a good experience. Um, and tomorrow I have an EDC retreat, Economic Development Council Retreat, and that's all I've got. Any questions for me? Go ahead and tell some report, starting with Councilmember Johnstone.
I don't have any events to report on, but, um, I think I'm correct in saying this is my last city council meeting, as long as the election results are certified in a tim- timely manner. So I just want to take a minute to make sure I thanked, um, Mayor DePinto, all the council members, and city staff for the past four and a half months. I have learned a lot, met some great people, and I have the utmost respect for each and every one of you. It is not an easy task you're doing, and you guys are all doing a great job. And I hope you all continue to have the best interests of Yelm in your heart for your service term, so thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Johnstone, thank you for your service. Uh, you will be, uh, expected to attend our next council meeting, though.
Uh, yes.
We'll vacate that seat at that time at that meeting.
Right.
Fourteenth should be here, twentieth.
Oh, excuse me, the twenty-eighth is the next, is the one that you'll be, um, or the election will be certified. So show up completely for the next one, um, and then, uh, November twelfth.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, excuse me, is when you would be vacating, let's see.
Still have to guess again.
And all three councilmembers who are, who are up, um, whoever wins that election will be sworn in by myself at that meeting. So, um, yeah, so expect, uh, for that to happen. Uh, thank you again, Councilmember Johnstone. We'll move on to Councilmember Richardson.
Well, I really appreciate my city of Yelm, my shirt with my hoodie, very thin, breathable, athletic, even though I'm not. Um, but thank you for the nice shirt, and then, uh, also, uh, I believe I was twenty-two in two thousand and five.
I just graduated high school in two thousand and five, from Yelm High School. But yeah, it's been a while. You had just become chief, like.
Yeah, I was chief for four years, I went fourth year. Oh, and this was done by, uh, Designs.
Or company, yeah. Uh, oh, well, the other thing that, sorry, the other thing I wanted to mention that we are going to be starting doing, um, is project updates. We're going to start doing monthly project updates for the community, for the council, for everybody, um, just to know where, what status is on different projects, like the dog park, um, like a roundabouts are coming up, um, all those, all those projects, um. So yeah. How, um, likely on social media, um, open to other ideas as well, too. Thank you, is that it, Councilmember Richardson?
No, no, no.
Yeah, all right, Councilmember Crossman?
Uh, it's, uh, one thing, so again, some questions about zoning and how it change zones. And so I asked Mr. Colt today, so I thought of this real quick, the process to rezone a piece of property, cause it's not quick and easy. Some people think they just go in, apply, and their property is rezoned. But it's not, first has to go through the planning department. Planning department will recommend to approve it or deny it. Then it'll go to the planning commission, the planning commission will recommend to approve or deny it, and then it will become before council, and the council makes a final decision. And then if the council denies it, they can appeal to I forget, Superior Court. Um, that, um, and the fastest it could happen in a perfect world, which we all know we live in, is ninety days. Uh, so that's, it takes a long time for something to get rezoned. And then the city is looking at what they used to do, and they're going to go back to that, most likely is, um, zoning requests will happen once a year. Instead of just as they come up, as somebody wants it, so it's all will be grouped together, which will be nice. Oh, cohesion, and then the last zoning was two thousand and sixteen. We'll be relooking at that here shortly, cause every eight years, as we looked at and approved. And see if any adjustments are, need to be made. And rezones happen because things change, market change, ideas change. That's why we have to have a process for rezoning, because it's not set in stone forever. There's a process to do, and people go through the process, and it can happen. So that was good, and then code requests can be changed if for some reason, somebody has a problem with the code. Kind of same deal, not quite as much, but similar process. So yeah, so if anybody keeps asking and wondering how to rezone, they want to rezone, there's a process.
Thank you, Councilmember Crossman. Councilmember Smith?
Um, I had no meetings, but I did just want to touch on what you were talking about, the courses, like the essentials and the Robert Cruz voter. When I was appointed in twenty-one, I think, I know I took three. I've taken another one, but anyway, they were very helpful as a new council member, so I would encourage whoever gets, you know, appointed or elected, sorry, um, they, they were valuable in the beginning.
We are going to be planning to do a, um, a Yelm one oh one here, starting in January, I believe. And it will include, um, council member, um, guidance and, you know, a new orientation program and all that. But also, we will be writing it for the public as well, so they can understand, as, as Councilmember Crossman can explain that process. Um, what different departments do, where taxpayer money goes to, uh, what different funds be for what, cause not everything pays, you know, you can't pay for one thing out of another fund or fund, blah, blah, blah. So it's, um, very complicated stuff sometimes, but sometimes when we can break it down, and hopefully, the public and, um, the rest council can also see clearly how we spend money and how government works locally. That's it, all right, great, Councilmember Hess?
Uh, first, I'd like to start off with, I'd like to request three things for the December study session. Uh, first thing I would like to have, uh, put on for this December study session is a short discussion about the EIC. So we can get refreshed on that and be able to know exactly where we're at as a council, and be able to make the, the next step for that if necessary. I would also like to have a discussion during the December study session about a social media guideline for not only city members, but also the elected officials of the city. And the last thing I'd like to have is a discussion about bringing back the General Government Committee uh, to help put together the agenda and for the city council meetings, as well as other committee meetings that might be out there, subjects that need to be pushed out to the appropriate committees. Uh, also, um, I would like to say that, um, it's very enlightening, we've had, within the past six months, either two property owners or two developers state that commercial doesn't work on the city of Yelm. And I would like to say I disagree with that. I don't think they are reaching out to the appropriate elements. I don't think they're reaching out to the Chamber of Commerce, which has their database of small business members that are looking for retail space. Uh, we, the thing I'd like to have, property owners who own the commercials and retail spaces, yes, not, bringing in nationals is great. I'm sure everybody wants to have a Red Robin, an Olive Garden, uh, who knows what else, these wonderful national ones. But when we're looking at for our town, the town that's here, we have a chamber that does a great job of promoting for the small businesses. And I hear from a lot of people that they're looking for space. There is no retail space, and the fact that there is very little retail space, just like with housing, it costs a lot because they can put the demand out there. So I'd like to make sure that we're working with the, the chamber to be able to help out the businesses of Yelm, to make sure that they're being heard. And Mayor, I want to compliment you on the roundtable, and the fact that you're going to be doing that quarterly, is what you're looking at doing. And I heard a little bit about it, and then hearing from the public comments, um, I'm sure it was a wonderful fire, uh, fire starter there, uh, but I heard you did a really good job, and it's good that you bring those notes to us, so we can see what's happening, how we can better work with businesses. And then the last item I'd like to discuss, it's kind of an educational thing in reference to taxes. There is the resolution that's being, uh, put up. Even though we as a city are not going to endorse it, because it was taken off of the thing, I would like to make sure that the residents and community members who pay attention have an understanding of what this tax is for. It's point, it's two tenths of one percent, or point two, which raised us from nine point three to nine point five, sales tax. And yes, you're right, there's a lot of statements out there of, we're overtaxed, we're overtaxed. In fact, state of Washington is the most, is one of the most regressive state tax in the United States itself. So if you want to fix that, we're going to have to the discussion of, uh, uh, personal income tax, we can't do that as a city. I think what the sheriff is trying to do by asking for this small tax is very helpful, because from my understanding, the Thurston County, Thurston County, uh, council, council members?
Commissioners.
Commissioners, they support him one hundred percent of, we need money to bring in more law enforcement, because there is a need for it. Commissioners. They support him one hundred percent of we need money to bring in more law enforcement because there is a need for it. If we don't do it with this two tenths of one percent sales tax that only affects commercial goods, not your eggs, sugar, milk, bread, but your clothing, which everybody's already shopping for the best deals. As well as when people come into Thurston County and spend their money, they're paying into that. The only other option they have to raise taxes is property tax. And when you all of a sudden add to property tax, you affect a lot of people. You all of a sudden affect the senior citizens who have a fixed budget that they planned on for years, saying this will be what my housing cost will be. And that's how I'm going to save, make sure I can do it. And then all of a sudden you raise their property tax. They can't control that. They can't go to the bank and try to get a lower loan or smaller percentage of loan or anything else like that. Property tax, property tax. Those that are working core, middle class, and just slightly above middle class, who are struggling for housing, whether they rent or own, are also affected by the raising of property tax. And so there's the difference there is that if we don't do it with a small raise in the sales tax, we're going to see it probably pushed onto as a property tax. And that's going to affect everybody's pocketbook a lot worse. So I'd like people to make sure that they consider the fact that the money's needed. Everybody's supporting it. They know that they're going to have to add it to the budget. And this was a, the point, the two tenths of one percent, I think is a very reasonable way to go about doing it. Because as I say, the other option is it goes into property tax. Other than that, I didn't have any, I don't have any meetings to report on.
I'm going to say to you on your request to add those items on the, uh, December study session, this is a reminder that there is no study session, um, next month, uh, due to the election. Um, it's Tuesday, uh, first Tuesday. Um, we do have quite a packed, uh, December study session. We will try to add at least one of these items on there, but in the upcoming months, we will have the rest of them on for sure.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Councilor Brooks.
Before I begin, I have a question. That is, is there still the public safety meeting? On that Tuesday. That happened in my kiosk still. Okay, perfect, great. All right. Well, one thing the mayor didn't mention is that we went to the South Patriot Town Habitat for Humanity ribbon cutting today for their new solar panels. Well attended by, um, both PSE, um, community members, those that work at Habitat for Humanity, and then our city staff and myself. Um. What have I been doing? So I went to the Leeds at Lunch. I think it's very important that at least one of us city councilors end up showing up and stay connected with our, um, Chamber of Commerce. And then the Thurston County Lead Community Advisory Board has invited me to join their discussions and I'm so excited. I've received a call from Jason, um, with Lee today about the progress in the meetings and, uh, and I want to make sure that people know that is a result of conversations that were held during our homelessness committee. Um, thankfully Tillman was there and was on the horn and ready to make those connections. Another connection that came out of the homelessness, uh, committee is that next month on the city sponsored, um, Community Resource Fair held at the community center, there will finally be a mobile medical clinic. And, uh, that will serve the insured, uninsured, those with primary care positions, no or not, like no questions asked. And there will be a prescriber there too. If somebody has a prescription, I mean, um, like an infection and needs a prescription immediately, it's, it's definitely needed and, um, I'm, I'm excited for the progress that's coming out of that committee that is just so new, but so necessary. Um, I met some city councilors at the Senior Center Breakfast, which was held this, uh, this month, right? Yeah. You got some say that, but we all went. It was almost a forum. That's how popular. Oh, yeah. And then one was left, but we didn't talk.
Local city business.
Exactly, exactly. We did that. One last thing is the Community Resource Fair is tomorrow and one thing that comes out of there is the opportunity for energy assistance. So anybody can bring in their energy bills and, um, apply right there. Uh, I can tell you that even myself has been granted or, uh, that. So their, um, level of acceptance is really high because they know there's a need. So please stop in to the Community Resource Fair tomorrow and get what you need to make your life a little bit healthier and safer. And that's what I've got.
Thank you, Councilor Brooks. Councilor Kaminsky.
Well, we had an arts commission meeting and we're working on new projects. And I know from Cody today that the wind sculpture should be up hopefully by the end of the month. And that's going over by the wagon wheel as we enter town, be a spinning palindrosa tree. So we're excited about that. And I had this Wally River council, uh, with special presentations by the O'Hop Creek Stormwater Management Pilot Project Group. Talking about the biofiltration along the, um, the ducts that go over the roads for into the river there. And then a presentation by DNR, um, Department of National Natural Resources. So fun facts that I didn't know, that they own three million acres in the state of Washington. Three million acres. And two of those million are forested. And a lot of it is agricultural land in eastern Washington, but I didn't know any of that. Um, we have also and part of, part of the land they own even takes up part of the Tacoma Mall. Yeah. And so they just talked about their fiduciary duty to the public, how they, uh, raise funds and revenue for the public with the tribes, how they, um, rent the land to communication towers. And just all the things they do, forestry, all of that. So we had a presentation. Oh, and one more thing. Lastly, on your idea for city updates, I think that's a great idea, but what I had in mind, because I thought about the very same thing. Every week I read my newspaper and there's lots of verbiage and quotations from the reporter about we, what we all said in the meeting. But I would like to see like a little corner of the paper, just dedicated to like the city scoop or the skid city corner. And just have like literal bullet points. What did we talk about at this meeting? The most briefest that you could, so you could look at it and go, oh, okay, that's what they did without all the verbiage. So maybe talk to the Scully Valley News and see if we can get our own little special corner.
Yeah, I'll, I'll chat.
Idea.
Um, I, I know they'd probably be interested in like guest tutorials. I don't know for, um, i- if it would cost us anything, um, or if they'd be willing just to, um, have a space to dedicate.
Just have a little square for us.
You can have those conversations. Uh, you want to remind me and we'll leave now.
In addition to social media, but I mean, paper, yeah.
Yeah, these are specific for projects, um, but yeah, we can expand that, starting small and.
You know, like one of the five things we talked about today, just put five bullet points and just keep it really simple. That's all.
Sounds good. Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Take a mo- motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Second, my Councilor Smith, any discussion? Say aye. Aye. Say nay. We're adjourned.